This is how the.
Seven o'clock.
Stay.
There was something.
It is right.
Yeah. I was like, oh, that's so off.
According to Apple.
Might be that's like Apple watch.
Doesn't.
So. Going to.
Could be the.
That's.
Could be the batteries about now.
Definitely.
Something more accurate than that, they say.
Oh.
Yes. Maybe someone Tommy Quarts or something.
But that's what sets these.
It'd be nice.
I bet it does.
Those in the morning?
No, maybe after next.
It could be eight.
What if we be out?
Bob Johnson is still on vacation.
Wow, that's why I don't know.
Is it vacation or is he actually?
It's vacation. Okay. And I have, I have the number if you want. All right. We'll have you. Share that at the correct time. I thought he was going for whatever reason I had, not he was going out west. Nah, he went south. But no, he went straight to the burger game. And he's been planning that for weeks. He said he had a baby. Yeah, he did. Yeah, I got a video. He's the number four of his hotel that he was in.
Why don't we? Open things up and be embarrassed. We will call the Grand County Department Commissioners to order Monday, October 3rd. Welcome to the month of October. We'll ask you to stand, Mr. Burton, please, in prayer. Mr. Wright will lead the pledge, then.
Shall we pray? Our Father, we thank you for the God that you are, that cares for each and every one of us, and will help guide us along life's pathway. As it should be with us in decision making at today's meeting. Let us these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We see it. First up on our items, we have our claims and payroll. And with regard to preapprovals, we have general invoice edits from September 26th and two single preapprovals. The invoice edit reports, the general is 115, excuse me, 115,372 dollars, 17 cents. Other batch was 66,392 dollars, 67 cents. Highway batch, 195,835 dollars, 33 cents for grand total, 377,600 dollars, 17 cents. Again, that was a preapproval on the 26th of September with two additional preapprovals, singles. On 9/26, Visa Card Member Services for Superior Court II in the amount of 543 dollars, 92 cents. And 2/27 Visa Card Membership Services again for Superior Court II in the amount of $30. Those were all preapproved. Need a motion to ratify those preapprovals.
Motion to approve.
A second. Motion with support to approve the invoice edit reports and single preapprovals as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. Regarding today's invoice edit reports, the general batch includes 103,955 dollars, 91 cents. Other batch, 81,805 dollars, 2 cents. Highway batch, 308,096 dollars, 7 cents for grand total of 493,857 dollars, no cents. This was for our review, and we would need a motion to pay those bills.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wright, second, Mr. Burton, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. We do have a payroll, number 20. The formal approval of preapproval, payroll 20, was given on September 27th. It was dispersed on September 30th. Gross amount, 519,451 dollars and 58 cents. So we would need a motion to ratify payroll 20.
Motion to ratify payroll number 20.
And I'll second. Motion, Mr. Burton, the second, Mr. Wright. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. We'll. Sign in some things here in a little bit, but we'll keep moving. Do have in the packet, I believe, a report from the clerk of court, month ending 8/31 of this year. And as before you, we would need to receive that or.
Motion to receive.
I'll second. Motion to receive the clerk of circuit court report ending April, excuse me, August 31st. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. Right. Communications board updates. This is where we have our elected officials. Anything from the auditor's office, Jim?
Yeah, I don't think so today, Mark. We'll pass the next.
All right.
I think I knew you will.
Collected. How about from dispatch and or EMA?
Good morning. As you guys know, Bob's on vacation, so you get me today. For the, we had our monthly COVID briefing this morning, and there were 46 new COVID cases reported last week, two new deaths. So, and there were four new cases reported today. So our numbers are 20,895 cases with 360 deaths. Bob did note that September was down 30% from August. So let's hope that trend continues. Really about what was discussed this morning. And then if I may, on the dispatch, we are one step closer to taking ownership of our new applet system. We did some coverage testing this past week, and I am extremely satisfied with the coverage. We do have some little issues to work out, working with J K to resolve those issues, but we're getting much, much closer.
So we've, we've been doing the initials for some testing on digital traffic, but fireside traffic with the towers up. Are we, are pleased with?
I'm very satisfied with, with the coverage that we have. We went, we went to the four corners of the county last weekend and was able to get out on a VHF hangout and was able to talk to dispatch, so. And they will talk back to us. So that will be great news for the county voluntary fire departments as well, as well as the Marion Fire Department. They'll be, they'll be on the same system, so they'll have countywide coverage as well. Just one thing, Kevin and I, on another note, Kevin and I was at a a group council meeting and discussed AT&T, keep mentioning his presentation on trying to get broadband into the entire county and stuff. So as we continue, we're going to continue that kind of dialogue and seeing how we can help, especially out the county. There's not much Wi-Fi available. We'll see what we can do to help, help that process.
That was a very informative.
I thought it was. Well, it's, so thank you for coming.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Mike, we're both there as well.
Good. Any other questions for dispatch or EMA? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Right. Think. I need to move on. Let's see. IT is not in the room. They evidently don't need any purchases this week. That's good. David is in the room. Now, is it? Thursdays and Fridays or Mondays and Tuesdays for you?
Thursday, Friday. I didn't want to miss her meeting here, so.
There you go.
Update you on a few things. I have some spreadsheets for you gentlemen. What we paved and chip silled this year. We need you a copy of that. Two of them.
Okay.
One with the yellow on it is the roads that we paved with Brooks this year. If you notice, I put the townships and the locations. Right now, we spent a million, 38814 dollars on paving projects this year. Just kind of update you a little bit on where we stand with those projects. And then the other packet thing that I gave you had all the roads that we had chip silled in the county. And the total for cost on that was 748,254 dollars. So we spent a little over $2 million on road construction this year already this year. So we do have a few more projects that we'd like to complete before fall, but we're still working on them, so. Update you gentlemen on that a little bit.
Is this a normal expenditure?
Yeah, usually we. Usually our chip sale is right around a million dollars per year. And paving just kind of depends on where we stand money wise, so we try to do as much as we can. Usually probably average, what, 12 to 14 miles a year paving, so. Hopefully with the new wheel tax, we can do a little bit more next year, so. Next I had to bring up is an unofficial detour. The state is looking at redoing a bridge on State Road 22, US 35 between State Road 9 and 37. That's just South of Marion Airport there. So we'd like to use the unofficial detour as County Road 100 West, over to County Road 600 South and then back to State Road 9, that direction. If you gentlemen would like to prove this, it needs all three signatures. Like I said, I believe this is spring 2023 for the state's project.
Well, it could be anticipated to be as early as April 23.
Yeah.
And the state will be doing that work, or you will be?
State will be doing it. This is just if they tear all these up, they'll pay us.
Our agreement with the state is.
Got you.
They pay us for the unofficial detour.
So if there's any damage on the detour route, okay.
So this is again a letter of agreement, unofficial detour, bridge deck overlay, US 35 Bridge over Bell Creek, point 39 miles south of State Road 27. Contract fee dash 41567, designation number 1800164. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Did you say State Road 27?
I, I, 37, I'm sorry.
37, okay. Trying to make work. Okay, I'm just checking.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, second. Motion with support. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. See, Steve, I don't see that you're good at testing, so we'll be all right.
The next thing I had to bring up is I need to buy a truck bed for one of our dump trucks that we bought a few years ago. It was not a brand new one that we purchased, but the bed went bad, and it's a live feed bed. But I have some price quotes from three different companies. First company I had was Linco. Their amount for the replacing the bed and all the hydraulics was 78,863 dollars. WA Jones was 59,986 dollars. And Clyde Truck was 82,500 dollars. I'd recommend that we went with WA Jones for the 59, 986. Actually be something that'll be paid for next year, completed towards the end of this year.
The funds are in your account?
Yeah, for next year.
For next year.
That's why I was, went ahead and paid for it next year, if that's all right.
Will that vehicle be in service yet this year? You, you kind of?
Yes.
So?
Yeah.
We'll have whatever many days to pay that off.
Actually, the truck bed was one they bought a few years ago for a truck show that they were going to install a new chassis, but they never got the chassis, so that's, they very got the bed installed, so. That was my other dilemma, was making sure that we had the product and be able to get it, so. Right now, they're six to eight months out on a truck bed, so. Don't really want to wait that long, so.
Good thing you're not buying ambulance.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a good thing I'm not buying any ambulance.
So it is your recommendation that we use WA Jones in the amount of 59,986 dollars?
Yes.
What do you think, gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
And I'll second. Motion, Mr. Burton, second, Mr. Wright, to approve the WA Jones purchase as presented. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried.
That takes you a little bit on Bridge 39. That's the one on County Road 1,000 East between 200 and 250 North. They should be done with getting all the structure off this week and then scheduled to get paved and guard rail, so hopefully, I'm hoping by the middle of October, that roadway will be open back up, so. Working along right quite well. So hopefully that, like I said, hopefully here in the next few weeks, that's open. The building project out of the highway department, they brought the lumber Friday, part of it, and it's supposed to start tomorrow on that. So hopefully we'll get started on that project. The bridge here in Marion, I'm getting ready to have a kickoff meeting on the bridge on 10th Street down by Key Solons. Hopefully here in the next couple of weeks, I'll have a kickoff meeting on it. And then Bridge 16 and 138, that's still in design work and moving along all right. Hopefully we'll be able to apply for community crossing grant the first of 2023. So I talked to them the other day and everything seems to be going all right on that, so. Reminder, I think we talked about this before, Branson Street Bridge. I'd like to try to apply for federal funding, which I believe is in November. I've still got BFNS working on trying to get me some documentation and all, everything I need to present to the state. If we do apply for a federal aid project, so.
And just remind us, is that a total replacement?
Yes.
Project?
Total replacement. And what we'd like to try to do is get it so it's only three piers in the water, so we don't have to log jail. Yes, so that'll save us a lot, but because every year we have to do it at least twice a year to get the logs out, so.
I, I, I know it's speculative, but at the same time, should the Charles Mill Dam be removed? Do we anticipate as much capturing of logs?
I think we still will, yeah. Yeah, because I, I just think that they can't get through there. It's such a narrow area, area, I should say. Hopefully, if we do replace it all, that'll eliminate that problem, so. Also, we've been having the railroad crossings painted throughout the county. Last year, we applied for a grant. We received $50,000 for line striping of the Rs, Xs. And they've started. I think they've got about half of them done, so. And those were done in thermo paints and they'll last real long, probably 10, 15 years with that, so. They've started on, I know they've done some around Gas City, and I think they're heading west, so. Working on that. We're finished on plan on pavement, a few more projects. Central dispatch and all that here in the next few weeks, so hopefully get that done in the month of October, so. We did change a big Culver pipe on 1100 South between 200 East and 250. Some pictures, you can look at them if you like. We got two more big pipes we got to change out here in the next few weeks. One is over on a ditch. I think the surveyor's off, or drainage board's going to take in the maintenance around 1100 East and 800 South. I don't know. That's the one that comes from Blackford County.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that. I think that Blackford County is actually going to do the collection.
Okay.
And, but I, I think it's going to come in under as a assessed ditch, and it's not currently.
So we're working on getting those done before the fall. One other thing, I was gonna let you know, that stink is still there. Survey.
Okay.
They, they cut around it. I did look at that there.
I did talk to him, and I should expect some paperwork, surveyor, this week.
Okay. I'm gonna let you know, they didn't move it, so it's still alternative here.
Good deal.
That's all I have, unless you gentlemen have anything.
Well, I'm gonna put you on the spot since, since Bob isn't here and Kevin is. Would you be available in the next month and a half to sit down with EMA and emergency services to review winter emergency protocols? Gotten a kind of a, just a for under my saddle that we make sure that we've got everything in order, and I'd like to do that with not only our, our county, but invite some municipal participation as well, so if you guys start thinking about when it'd be a good day to bring us together for that, I appreciate it.
Yeah. We did, for, yeah, we did chip sell Towne Fairmount last Thursday to help that community out, so we got that done too. So they wanted to wait till after James Dean, which I don't play up there, so. We got that all done, so. Yeah, just let me know when you want to get together.
Good.
All I have, unless you gentlemen have anything.
Nothing else, right?
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Currently on our agenda, nothing under old business. Are you aware of anything there, gentlemen? Under new business, Andrew Lau, Lau Associates Timekeeping System and Tax Information Website proposal. He's online. I see Andrew is online. And if you can hear all right, Andrew?
Yeah, I can hear. Can you hear me all right?
Very good. Thank you.
Awesome.
Please feel free to go ahead.
Okay, well, on the agenda today is up for discussion to hopefully move the county forward with a timekeeping solution. Bundled with that timekeeping solution, the treasurer had, had a need and wanted to utilize our Lau Tax Information website. It's a website, taxpayer friendly website, where they can go out and view all their property tax information out of our system and also download tax bills, those types of things, make payments and whatever else they'd like to do. So I bundled those two options together with the hopes that we could give you a little discount for moving forward with those options. So you may, may see those, those quotes in front of you there. If you had any questions regarding either of those two options, the timekeeping system is a pretty big, robust project that we'd be taking on as far as the Lau Tax Information website. That's just something that we need to build on our end and then get in place for the treasurer. So the, the, the time and attendance website project is, or time and attendance project is a much larger project that will take months to implement and get up and running for the county. But it should have some pretty big benefits for the county in terms of moving them forward, giving the employees a little bit more information in terms of days off and, and benefit balances and hopefully in the process, replace a lot of manual data, manual forms that are needed to finalize the payroll process.
Any special questions on this, gentlemen?
Just, just a question, Mr. Lau. When it comes to the treasurer's website.
Yes.
Being able to go from one vendor to you, do you see any headaches with that? Do you see what kind of timeframe is the proprietary type things? What, what do you see in that?
There's no real conversion process because the website is built off of our own data that we already use for property tax right now for our property tax system for the county. So as far as getting that website operational, it's just a matter of priority on our side and getting, getting the programmer working on it. Once, once he works on it, it's a relatively quick thing, so, you know, we're in October now. I'm sure Tiffany's goal would be to have this up by, by November so that the taxpayers could see it, and I can see what we can do on that. But timeline wise, you're looking at right up, right up to November to get that up and running at this point. And, and then we can, you know, once it's operational, taxpayers know about it, they can go there and, and get all the information that they need. And November would be a good time for Tiffany to put the information out. Hey, you know, once this is up and running, hey, you can go here and get this information now as well.
So you don't see any problem by doing that?
Do I?
Timeline?
Timeline wise, I, I, I need to, I need to double check with my programming staff and make sure, I don't know what projects are in, in place ahead of that. But it's a relatively straightforward thing. There's not really a conversion, so to speak. So it's really just a matter of us making it a priority, and I think we can do that.
That's all right. I see that the sheriff is, is on with us. Sheriff, did you want to make any comments about the, the one particular program you're encouraging?
No, I do not have any comments at this time.
All right. Thank you. We don't have anybody from the treasurer's office. Speak to this either, right, yeah? Okay, no. Mr. Wright, he with their demonstration. What they're proposing here.
Right, it is, it is kind of a nice difference. Very easy to use. A lot more information to me. That's the reason I was asking for it. It's like a lot of data. Sounds like they can do, at least that's what I heard.
Yes.
My, my big question is always, how are we funding this?
Sheriff's Department would be funding the timekeeping system, the initial payment upfront. So it's estimated right now at 32,500. Commissioners would then take on the monthly maintenance and licensing fees, $2,323. I did not include the advanced scheduling option. Effectively came to an agreement that saw what we wanted. And according to Mr. Lau, I don't think any other county has implemented that thus far. As far as the LTI is concerned, he provided us with a heavy discount. So it'd be 10,000 upfront for the build. 10,000 annually, and then another 3,000 for the. Do we currently have that in our budget for next year? We do not, but I believe we can get by with contractual services at this point without having to ask for additional appropriation.
Okay.
I looked at it earlier this morning for that particular line item. I believe there was 64% of the appropriations to left, I should. For this year, 2022.
Yes.
I think it equated to 46 grand, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, after Sheriff's Department and the treasurer. Well, after Sheriff's Department and Treasurer's Department have reviewed this, they're asking us to make a decision. You've had the opportunity to review that. Thoughts, comments? Are we ready for motion or we want to discuss some things?
So just as a comment, I like I say, I've looked at both. The the user friendliness of their particular program is very good. Information available to everyone. I think the whole county will appreciate that. I think the realtors and the surveyors and everybody else will appreciate what all kinds of information is on this. Sheriff's ready for a motion? Mike, you got anything?
No.
I would I would make a motion that we accept Lau's bid for both the website bill as well as the timekeeping system.
Second. Motion, Mr. Wright, second, Mr. Burton. Any other discussion? Fairly good picture. And I want to thank the Sheriff's Department for being a part of this process, being a team player and helping the county move forward and for the input from the treasurer as well. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you all for your support. We'll get to work.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we were going to have an RFP recommendation from Envoy Dale Davis and the the lead team for the work that that we're asking for studies. We got three RFPs in. We got probably two that that seem to be positive, but we need more clarification. We're asking them for a face to face meeting within the next two weeks to clarify some issues on how much it really would cost for the study, the jail certification study to go forward and making sure that all of our our buildings are are part of that that need to be. So we don't have a recommendation for for that yet, but we had a very good meeting and look forward to getting a few things clarified next in the next couple of weeks. The idea will be to hopefully have an incoming recommendation by the end of this month. Next up on the items, we have public defender commission appointment. We were made known that where that we do have a public defender appointment that has expired, that person continues to serve until a new appointment. And I have talked with our appointment, Rodney McKellar. He is very happy to continue to serve on that particular public defender board if we do the appointment, and so I would bring his name for your consideration today.
Yes, motion to approve.
Second, motion to approve Rodney McKellar as our continuing public defender commission appointment. That was a motion Burton, second Wright. Any other discussion other than that? Appreciate him willing to serve again. He's been doing a good job for us. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. We've got some administrator work to do here. What do you got for us, Justin?
Just backing up to the appointment, I'll have the letter signed. I'll stand up with all three, send it out to the Public Defender Commission and Public Defender Elliott. Thank you. As far as the fencing proposal goes, I'm presenting this on behalf of EMA, Bob Jackson. You have a quote in front of you, four thousand nine hundred eighty five dollars is to fence and enclose the area behind Salem Bank Building to protect some of the equipment back there. This is an initial quote that he got. It's for just normal chain link with three strands of barbed wire. Sure, if he wanted the barbed wire, we're not sure if he wanted the fence to be coated. That would be an additional cost.
Coated as far as?
Black vinyl.
There's coating.
Okay. All right. We're using the chain link and we're putting in fresh asphalt back there. I kind of like the idea of black co vinyl on there.
Okay.
Especially in the downtown area. I think that would look a lot better than just a
Okay. I'll go back and get the quote. Do you still want the barbed wire? It's almost a little bit too much.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary.
I'd say by the time we take off the barbed wire, hopefully it's gonna cover a little bit of the coating. My my take, I just think that might be a little bit too much. There's as far as anything, I mean, it's exposed now. We haven't had any accident or anything like that that I'm aware of as far as anyone getting hurt off of anything that we're trying to protect. See, I think the barbed wire is a little bit.
I'll have Bob reach out, get another quote and come back and present this. It's really no hurry at this point in time because he needs to wait on Highway to finish the page at the parking lot back to go.
I would say this, and I don't know how, I'm not a fence guy, but I would say it would be great if we could convert that to barbed wire later if we needed to. However, that construction is instead of having to rip out a fence we just put in, I just didn't have.
Instead of a six foot fence, maybe a seven foot fence.
Yeah.
Could take the additional barbed wire we needed and just extend it up over the fence.
Something like that, if that makes sense.
I think typically the caps of the fence posts just come off and you set the
Set the
Set the arms.
Yeah. Okay, like I say, while we're in the mess, instead of if we wanted to add that later because we did have an issue, it'd be good if we were already set up, ready to go and not have to rip out what we just put in.
So we'll have a final quote coming back, because
Yes, and there's only one company quoted?
There are no fencing companies here.
I think it's redundant, but across the board, everyone is looking for people who work and we have a population right now that a certain segment does not want to work out.
Next two items are just routine annual items, the presentation of twenty twenty three holiday schedule and twenty twenty three payroll schedule. Both in your packets there.
Has this been run by auditor's office as well?
Yes, it has.
So we're should be in good shape with the auditor's office. Solidify these dates if you're ready to do that, gentlemen.
The payroll schedule act was prepared by the auditor's office and given to me.
Do we need to do these separate or can we do them combined?
I have no problems doing them together if we desire.
Okay. President, I move that we pass the holiday schedule for twenty three, twenty twenty three as well as the paper schedule for twenty twenty three.
Second. Looking to Mr. Wright, second, Mr. Burton. Any other questions or comments or statements regarding these documents? I would note that we do have technically we do have technically municipal elections. Have we in the past given those days off? Even if it's just a municipal election?
That I can't answer. I can look into see what's been done in the past.
We could we could move forward on the motion with the caveat that we're reviewing the the municipal elections to see if we're required on on make those a a day off on the calendar.
So.
Okay. I support that. All right. Any other questions? Reason I brought that up, I said, well, we're gonna be short too since it, but it is technically an election year, so we just need to get that clarified. Well, we have the motion before us and the caveat, we'll find out about the municipals as those if needed. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. Right, if we've got time, we'll find that out. Thank you. Right. When it comes to other new business, I have none. Gentlemen, do you have other business that we need to work on? All right, we are about ready to go to public comment and I have a gentleman, I don't know if he's in his meeting right now. Could you check and see if Mr. Kratzer is able to speak or if he's still in his other Just a reminder that we have a day off on the tenth, is that correct, Columbus Day? And we will be meeting in regular session on the seventeenth at ten o'clock. He's still working, we can have him speak here in a couple of moments, but we can go to other public comment. If you'd like to address the board commissioners, we invite you to step up, present your concerns or comments and we can hold. Any other things that we've got coming up that we need to be thinking about, gentlemen? Are you still good for the nineteen with the central?
Yes.
It's all the way still good.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. This would be appropriate.
Not sure I follow along. How long will that bridge be closed out by south of the airport?
Um.
All winter?
No, the the one on State Road twenty two and thirty seven, that will start working until probably April of of next year. So they
Won't start till April. I thought you meant it wouldn't be finished by
No, it won't start till April. It usually is state works hard, but I'm gonna say two to three months.
Yeah, is it on twenty two or on thirty seven?
It's on twenty two. I want to say, I want to say
Twenty two and thirty five.
Thirty five, yeah. I want to say it's that
Get these numbers right.
It's that dip right down there, you know, kind of where the
Dip.
Is that Buffalo Creek that goes through there?
Okay.
I think that's what
And that won't be till next spring.
Next spring.
Next question on the holiday, did you approve the city election as a holiday or not?
We're we're making sure that that it is required, whether it is required or not.
Is it in what you passed?
It's in our caveat that that we're approving this pending the
What's this? Does this include that?
No, it did not have those dates marked.
Okay.
But if they are required, then we will add add those.
But like, this did not include, that's what I was trying to, I don't have what's in front of you, so.
Correct, you are you are right. It did not include it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Yeah. Anybody else? Need to speak? Mr. Kratzer. Always do a recess for a couple of moments if you'd like that, gentlemen, or we can just sit here and just look like bum some water. I guess he's been waiting to speak to some group since he has been all over the world, so. All right. As I think you say about the, I think we'll go about another four or five minutes if he's not
I don't have that proposed today. She just got through it.
At the O's. He says, I'm trying to do two meetings at the same time, so I don't have to be back tonight. I think what I'll do is I will share with you what he's conversed with me and if he comes in while I'm explaining it, that's fine, and if not, we probably need to to go on. So Mr. Kratzer, I do not have his first name, but he wanted to lodge a complaint with board commissioners. His complaint is that he has already applied for a solar permit on his property for personal and it has been rejected or put on hold by the area plan. Mr. Val, if you have any comment, Mr. Kratzer was wanting to make a complaint. Did I provide that factual data correctly?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't I didn't hear who you said.
Mr. Kratzer?
Yes.
He wanted to make it an appearance here and form a logic complaint that his application was not received.
Yes, I have been directed by the president of the Area Plan Commission not to receive any solar applications until they have a chance to meet this evening. So that they can, they're, it was put to me that they are, they are not aware of their position within the solar ordinance yet and to hold off until the members had a chance to speak.
All right, we haven't, we haven't done any work with our particular attorney, but as I understand it, once an ordinance is is signed, it is in full effect. So I hope that that meeting will get some clarity because I don't want to put the county at risk for for any type of suits because of inaction.
I have conveyed Indiana code with the president. I was told to still not allow any solar applications.
I think Mr. Kratzer is available for his comments now.
I'm sorry, I'm actually still on that.
If you don't mind stepping up to the podium, presenting your name and your address and your concerns.
Name's David Kratzer. I'm at thirty nine forty eight east, six fifty north, Marion. And I didn't come prepared to make a statement like this, official statement, because I'm not even positive of the, I'm not even positive of the name of the company that submitted my permit for a solar system. I deal with them as Tri-County New Holland, but they also have another division. I gotta turn this down because it would bother me. They have another division that sells solar energy panels. I have I have a permit submitted by them that wasn't even received, let alone looked at. And I know that most people in here already know of a situation here in town, but I just wanted to voice my opinion that the entire world is trying to push towards some kind of energy conscious way for our world to survive. And here we're trying to do the right thing and the county of Grant is not even allowing us to submit a submit a proposal, let alone even look at it and deny it for a particular reason. to submit, submit a proposal, let alone even look at it and deny it for a particular reason.
Just to let you know, our area plan director is online as well. Okay. Kind of gave the idea that you were wanting to lodge a complaint because you, your, your application had not been received.
Yeah.
And our general understanding to this point is, once the ordinance is in effect by the commissioners, it's standing local law ordinance. But the, the concern is that the area plan doesn't know their role in that yet. That's why they're holding it up. Hopefully in their meeting tonight, they will be able to get some clarity. So.
Okay.
That, that's what we're hearing from the director and his communication with the area plan president at the time. Again, we can take the complaint here, but if you have the opportunity, you should probably make your complaint to the area plan as well.
I am going to try to do that. I expressed to you, Mark, a little bit ago that I, I am a farmer. It's just spring or in the mornings, we're not allowed or not able to cut beans. As the day goes on, beans dry out, we're capable of cutting them. And, and I just wanted to at least make my presence at some point. I will do my best to be here. And I'm glad you said then, reminded or told me who that was again, because I thought I was talking to the president after you said that, but I was talking to the director upstairs. Okay, because yeah, I've already talked to him. I might have chose my words a little differently if it was somebody else. So. Is there anything that, is there anything else that I can do to help move this forward?
But again, the, that seems like the, the nozzle's shut off at the APC right now. So you, that's where you, you really need to direct the question.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all very much for hearing me. Sorry for my problems, but that meeting's still going on. It's actually way more important than this.
All right, Mr. Kratzler. Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Julie Hartland, twenty-sixth floor, the east and fifty-south Fairmount. And the, the ordinance was tried to bring to your attention last month that it was, has illegal parts in it. So our county and none of us in the county would want to go forward with that. And this solar, even in Plaskett County, it's been shown that it, it truly does devalue homes. And we have brought that to your attention. And so we're still trying to uphold it in Indiana code that says we do have protect people in the, in the county do a protection against that. I don't. So we have tried to do the ordinance correctly and have tried to ask everyone to do the ordinance correctly. And someone even pointed for order last month that there's an illegal part in it and that's been ignored. So there's been a loss of trust in this, in this ordinance. And so we're just trying to do what's right for everyone. And we want to make, and we would like the part that's illegal to be made legal first. And there's just other issues going on with this. So that's, I, I doubt it'd be held up forever because if you're, if you're wanting to do, you know, like solar that doesn't devalue someone's home, that that's the great way to do it. Like we do a lot of it. So.
Thank you. All right. Business. Right, we will be in recess until October seventeenth. Thank you.